Will be the third one that we've been working on, two in Jones and Luther. Or we're about to have another one.
You have six total this round.
Six total.
And this is the second one of those six.
And this is our match, the 21,000 is the county's match. So if you don't have questions, I'll move it.
That'd be great. Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item 13 is also from District One. It deals with an agreement with the Oakdale Public School System to provide a handicap ramp to the tracks surrounding the football field.
Move in.
Morning.
Morning.
There's a motion and-
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 14 is also in agreement with the Millwood Public School District. And this is to construct a walking track, not to exceed 26,491.
Move in.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right, item 15 is from the county clerk. This is to execute a health plan excess risk application, basically a stop-loss contract for the health benefit plan. Any questions? Morning, John, you want to come up and give further enlightenment?
I'll try. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This was approved by the Budget Board on May 18th. This is just an application to apply for stop-loss coverage. As a reminder, it's with Voya, and they're the only carrier that quoted us this year, and it's very good that we got a quote.
Yeah, very good. Now, the questions?
Move in.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item 16 is an engineering agenda item, and it's to approve an agreement for services with Smith Roberts. This is- has to do with the survey and land services for the Pauline Meyer Shelter at the Juvalo Justice Center.
Yes, Commissioners, I gave you a drawing that's laying in front of you. One side of it details what our current deed shows outlined in yellow, and the other side is what the state has requested that you transfer to them. We're going to have to do some survey work to make a good document. We'll quit claiming that to them when we're finished. Maybe one outstanding issue that we'll have to deal with going forward is parking to go along with the building.
Chris, what your recommendation is to pass it today?
I need to get the survey contract passed so we can start the work.
Move in.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Stacy. All right, item 17. This is from Environmental Health and Safety. It's to approve our employer's application for basically self-insurance. We have close to amount of $1,000. I thought that was a million dollars in the past. Isn't that high? Don't remember. Okay. Item 17 is to basically requisition $1,000 to file our application with the Oklahoma Workers Compensation Commission to carry our own risk insurance.
Move in.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Aye. All right. No, you know, you perceive we're on item 18. Unless you want me to.
Go ahead.
All right, item 18 is to approve the Oklahoma lawyers for children use of the east parking lot at the Oklahoma County Juvalo Center for a 5K run on June the 24th from 6:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon.
Move in.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 19 is from the Policy and Governance Committee, possible action to deal with a recommendation to approve a lease agreement with Oklahoma State University on behalf of its Cooperative Extension Service in Oklahoma County. The county-owned property is located at 2500 Northeast 63rd Street. This is our annual lease with the OSU Extension Center. Any questions?
Oh.
The next item is the funding contract.
Okay, move this.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, item 20 is to take action regarding a recommendation from the Oklahoma County Policy and Governance Committee to approve a mutual cooperation agreement between Oklahoma State University on behalf of its Cooperative Extension Service and Oklahoma County. And this is a kind of a new format. We have a contract with them to provide these services, and that contract is- has been in our packet. It came with a recommendation of funding for $450,000 for the annual services. Are there any questions that you all care to ask? Ladonna is here and with a couple of other important people.
Good. I'm over with public side of the $450,000.
Well, are there any questions? Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right. If there are no questions, let me ask Ladonna, would you come up, please, and tell us with regard to this proposed contract, your recommendation regarding the funding?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, good morning. I presented to the Board of Governance Committee last week and kind of had our budget breakdown of what I needed to continue my office for the year 1718, and hopefully your chief deputy shared that with you with our requested budget breakdown. And I kind of line item each category depending on how much money I needed, and my total request was $549,022. Those are three numbers that I've came up with, and for me to continue running my office with the amount of staff that I have right now, and as you guys know, with the new lease that was passed, I have to pay all the utilities and support the building, and that cost, you know, increased more than I would need in the past because I'm having to do that. So do you guys have any questions about any of the expenses?
I don't have any questions about the expenses. I'm just wondering if there's a change in what we've been committed to give you, and if that is- if there is a change, what that change is in case you come back another time, maybe next week, and let us pursue the extra $50,000 you're asking for? Because this doesn't pay $450,000 as I see it, and we have to do it this way. You can come back and ask for your money, we don't need to. I'm not sure that I'm accustomed to put the things in a contract that's not in a contract. Does that make sense to you?
Well, I submitted, the contract that I submitted was to Commissioner Mon's office for the $549,022. I don't know what happened to that contract, but I did submit that to Chief Satterwhite. But at the Board of Conference, there was another contract that popped up.
Okay, let me call Jill Blau up to help me figure this out. Jill, can you help me, please?
You could rewait until she's finished with questions.
Will she ask if we have any questions?
I have some questions.
Let him ask his questions, please.
Do you mind?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
You don't either. The amount that you requested, the $549, obviously is considerably higher than the $450 that was recommended by the committee. What will that do to your budget if you don't receive the full $549?
That would put me definitely one short one FTE.
That you currently have?
Yes, that I currently have now.
The- what was, to answer Ms. Johnson's question, what was added to the contract? Because last year, your contract was roughly $500,000, wasn't it?
$489, yes.
$489, okay. And what has been added to the expenses for this next year? Just give me those real quickly.
Right. Mainly, as you can tell from my breakdown, is I'm having to pay for the utilities and stuff, and then also our staff salary fringe and benefits went up a little bit because of the, I think, employee benefits, that type of thing. So basically, just when you add it up, it just increased mainly because of utilities and other things I'm having to pay. Plus, again, our staff salary fringe and benefits did go up a little bit.
Okay. All right, does that generate any other questions?
I would like to make a comment. I'm not sure on the $450,000, I didn't have a chance because of this contract for me to even talk to the Budget Board, so I'm not sure, they weren't even aware of what money I needed when they approved that $450. So I just want to let you know that that was, I had no conversation with that amount.
Okay, did you propose the $450?
No, I did not. No, I was not allowed to.
Yeah, Noah?
I wasn't invited, I was not part of the agenda.
Her number was $549 that she submitted as a request.
Okay, let me ask, let me ask the- the committee, please. Jill, you want to?
Ladonna, would you take a seat for just a second?
Sure. Don't go far, because I might ask you some more questions.
All right, well, Steve is actually the chairman of this committee, but he's going to go ahead and let me talk about this. The version that you have before you today is one that I had actually taken from the previous contract that was approved by the Board last year, but was never signed by Oklahoma State. That's number one.
Right.
So there are a couple of changes in the version that you have before you. The most notable change with regard to what you have before you is that in the event either party fails to sign the agreement, there is no continuation of the funding on a temporary basis, if you will. Previous agreements have had language that would allow for there to be temporary funding, so we've almost concluded an entire fiscal year on a temporary funding basis. So in order to try to prevent that and to make the funding tied to when the document is actually signed by both parties, you'll see that language, and it is the new paragraph 17. Now, as far as the $450 goes, that is the amount that was approved by the Budget Board when you all approved the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So I understand that there's an amendment to change that number to $500,000, although if you do that at this time, there is no funding for that, as I understand. So in order to move forward, it would seem that you would have a couple of options. You could approve the contract at the $450 level, which is tied to the funding that the Budget Board approved, and come back and attempt to amend it at some point in the event someone were able to secure the additional $50,000. Or you could not have a contract moving forward into the next fiscal year until the Budget Board perhaps could act. But the version that you have, again, is an attempt to try to make sure that we do have an enforceable contract with Oklahoma State.
Well-
If you have questions about how the BET process works, I can turn that over to Steve or to Cody.
The budget actually hasn't been finalized for next year. My understanding is still has to go to a public hearing, and then the Budget Board will have to take final action on whatever results from the public hearing. So it's still, at this point, subject to being changed or amended.
That's correct, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, and this is-
Traditionally, it's pretty much been what you've approved the first time and gone to the public hearing, and I understand there may be some changes, and change is something that occurs, and-
Well, I understand that, I don't know who came up with this $450 figure.
I believe that is an outgrowth of the BET process. As you'll recall, Commissioner Johnson's office submitted a request for district attorney's opinion almost two years ago regarding OSU and whether or not they're a county entity or a state entity. Very clearly, it came back that they are a state entity. It was determined that the best way to handle our relationship with them, although it's required by statute, it doesn't require us to fund them at a certain level, was via a contract. And so when Ladonna came to the Policy and Governance Committee, she had line itemed out within the contract, proposed contract, where the money would be used. I suggested to her that that wouldn't probably be a good idea because that would take away some of her flexibility to use the money that the county was committing. So that's kind of how we ended up with the contract.
I think that's fine. How did the committee come up with a $450 figure, given their request?
Again, that was tied to what was recommended by BET and, to my knowledge, approved by the Budget Board for next fiscal year.
But BET had never even heard from her for next year's budget.
I- it was a public meeting, whether she showed up or not, I don't know. I don't think BET.
Well, maybe Steve can enlighten that.
Yeah, I was against BET, and this is the first year that OSU was treated this way. We had found out they were a non-county entity, so basically, it's my understanding, it was like a contract, not like a copier contract, but it was just a contract.
Correct.
They were a non-county entity, and we were going to contract out with them.
Yeah.
So at that point in time, I was the one that threw out the $450,000.
All right.
Because I had a rough idea of what they came in for. I hadn't been able to review the entire contract. On the lease we had with them, they had to pay utilities on that lease, but then they were recapturing those utilities on their contract, so I did disallow that amount. But anyway, basically, the $450,000 was given by me. In BET, yet, and this is the first cycle we've done this, I don't really know going forward if this would be a BET or Budget Board item since it's a non-county entity. I've never handled a situation like that before.
Well, any contract would have to be approved by this Board, so I assume that's the place to start.
Yes, sir, right.
And once the contract is in place, then the Budget Board can figure out, you know, how to fund it.
Right, well, $450,000 was set aside in general government in the event that you guys approved the contract.
Okay. But at that point in time, you had not seen the budget request from Ms.-
I had a draft of their contract at that time for $429, 49.
I'm not sure what last year?
No, this cycle, I had the contract, that you had given me the $529,000, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
$529, not $429.
Right, yeah, $529.
So you knew it was more than $450?
Yes, I did.
So how did you, how did, what process did you go through?
My process was, I did not have a chance to review the contract. I knew there were some charges that they incurred during the lease, and they were trying to recapture with the MOU, and that was what I disallowed.
Okay. So now that you've had an opportunity to review their request, their actual request, this $450 sound like it's satisfactory to take care of their needs?
It does to me, simply because some of their cost has increased. It's like a lot of entities, I don't know if additional people's been hired by OSU Extension, but it appears that if that, you know, if that was the case, that the county would pick up that tab, and I don't know the ratio of what OSU pays towards, you know, the operation of this.
I'm sure you heard her a minute ago say that if she's funded at $450, then she'll have to actually fire one of her educators.
I really can't speak to that because I don't know what responsibility OSU has. I don't know if they would come up to play on something like that.
Well, I suppose she can address that, but it seems to me like we, somehow, we got the process a little backwards this year, and I understand that it's a brand new-
Yeah, and like I said, this was the first year, I mean, going forward, I would, you know, the BET would seek direction on how to handle something like this because, again, being a non-county entity, it was our understanding that, you know, Ladonna couldn't come before the BET and plead her case, and I could be mistaken on that.
Okay, so we'll have to figure out some process in the future-
Right.
-to get those requests prior to making a decision on-
Yes.
-how much to fund them.
Yes.
And now that we know that $450 is inadequate to fund her budget, would it not be reasonable to supply the additional funds that she's requested? And not even that amount, but five hundred thousand?
That would be the pleasure of the Board, because the Policy and Governance Committee, you know, Ladonna spoke to us, and it was, I believe, unanimous vote, the three members for the $450.
Right, but that was prior to understanding what they needed.
No, she pleaded her case in the Policy and Governance-
I thought you said she didn't. I thought you said she didn't appear.
No, I'm talking about BET, sir.
She can go to Policy and-
In the Policy and Governance meeting we had last week. No, that was-
Oh, I understand that.
That was her form, because she should have had a form, obviously, to plead her case.
I was here for that meeting, but the contract was already, the $450,000 was already in the proposed contract that was dealt with that day.
Right. It was a proposed amendment at that time that the Policy and Governance accepted and made a recommendation to the Board.
Okay. All right.
Again, Commissioner, to understand where the $450 came from. It came from what BET recommended, and the Budget Board approved as the yet-to-be-fully-approved budget for the next fiscal year. So that $450 didn't appear out of the air when I put the contract together.
Okay.
I took that number based upon what the BET and the Budget Board had done.
But that number was drawn from, by somebody from somewhere that did not include the information that she submitted later.
Again, and part of, as Steve said, part of the issue here is, does a tenant such as OSU or any other tenant, are they responsible for the utility costs, or is the county going to pay the utility costs on their behalf? That's part of the increase in the contract, as I understand it, from the Policy and Governance Committee.
Right.
So that would be a policy decision you guys would have to make. The other issue, though, is, I lost my train of thought.
Well, I think we have provided those funds in the past. If we sit down and look at what we've done in the past and try to compare it to what we are doing this year, I think we've changed our-
Well, I think what happened is, we had a big discussion about putting a meter on their building, right? And we have all that here on this one.
Can't separately meter, I don't think you can separately meter it. Is that right, Ladonna?
But it came as a result of this opinion you've asked for.
Are you talking about the county building or the OSU Conference Center? The meter?
Yes.
There's separate meters on both of them. There's, I get bills for both, I get OGNB bills for two places, ONG bills for two places, water bills for two places, so I'm paying both. But what I, what we're addressing in this utilities is all the Oklahoma County buildings.
Office buildings.
That's it. And I know Joe made the comment about other tenants not, you know, paying their utilities, but my thing is on that. I just want to go back to what we do for the county and our purpose of why we exist, and that's to, on your behalf of this Oklahoma County, is to educate, you know, the public. I mean, we do it a little bit different than just a normal person renting the facility. You know, we provide services specifically for Oklahoma County.
But give me background on it, just for refreshing my memory, because we had Keith, I think, talk to us about whether or not it was possible to meter these buildings. I'm just trying to refresh my memory about all that, because we were reacting to the DA opinion about, or Stacy?
Stacy.
The only utility that we couldn't get two separate taps for was water, so we actually put a meter between the two buildings. I don't know if the water department is actually reading that meter or not to separate the two bills, but all other utilities are actually set up as separate accounts. And prior to that, it was just a utility bill that the county received and paid. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Before we moved into the new facility, or part of that, I guess after we moved, I've never seen a utility bill, it was being paid by the county.
But this all was prompted, is my point-
Correct.
-by the DA opinion, right?
Well, not paying the utilities, but depending on who we are, that we're not considered a department. I don't think it has anything to do with the utilities. That's y'all's decision, from my understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Is, ma'am?
Ms. Johnson, yes.
Is the contract fine? You know, we have a contract out there for a year, a year.
Last year's contract?
Yeah.
I don't think so, but I think that the individuals that would sign it are here today.
I approached Commissioner Mon's office two months ago, maybe, talking about the contract with Steve, and he was going to check with the DA's office to see if we actually had to sign this year contract, because I needed to buy a little bit of time to get all my vendors approved through OSU on their OK Corral and set up payments, because the minute that contract is signed, that means no more using POs, that type of thing, paying our bills. That means we have to be doing it through Stillwater, so there's a little bit of time, and I explained my concern to Steve on that, and he was going to check, and I never heard back, so I assumed, and since the Budget Board did approve our budget last year before all this changed, we were operating okay. I don't know.
Any other questions?
No.
A little bit about that. As you recall, in October of last year, when you all did the lease and the contract with Oklahoma State, there was a, there was language in the lease that Oklahoma State would be given a certain amount of days, I believe it was 60 off the top of my head, in which to transfer the utilities, et cetera, into their name. While she may have had a conversation with Steve two months ago, I would think that six months would have been enough time for Oklahoma State to begin the process of following the DA's opinion and not utilizing our purchasing department, which unless something has changed as of the day, I believe they're still doing. So in fairness to Steve, he had, Oklahoma State had plenty of time in which to transfer and to come under the terms of the contract and the lease. So we don't control their purchasing procedures. We attempted to follow the advice of the district attorney when we put the contract and the lease forward last year.
Okay, other questions?
Steve, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yes, I have talked to Ladonna on several cases on this specific item. You know, it was like Joe had mentioned, it was said to her that, you know, they've had a lot of time. I know that she's had issues trying to get it done, and, you know, that's about where it stands, because obviously, I can't make an agreement with anybody, and we did have, as far as the lease was concerned, we did have a signed lease, so we had an enforceable contract on that part.
Seems to me we've got a situation where we've done something one way for probably almost 100 years, and now we've got to change in the paradigm, and so we're trying to wrestle with how to actually do that, and I think we're almost there. So I don't want, I don't want it to seem, or I don't want it to actually occur, that this particular entity that has been a close, close partner with Oklahoma County and has provided so much service to our residents in Oklahoma County is treated unfairly, you know, just because, you know, we've got a change in their status.
Yes, and Commissioner, I don't think that's anyone's intent to try to treat them unfairly. This is a new process, and, you know, we have some items that we're just trying to iron out, as far as, you know, the money is one of them, you know, contracts that have yet to be signed. So, yeah, I mean, moving forward, I think this all can be worked out.
Yeah, I hope so.
Which leads us back to my original question. Could we approve that $450,000 today, and then maybe next week, just entertain the idea of giving them $50,000 more? Because there's still so many questions left that need to be answered by this board.
So she's asking for $99,000 more, but you're saying just entertain $50,000?
Oh, I thought she just wanted-
$50,000.
That's what's $549.
I understand, but I, my amendment is just to raise it to $500,000. Let me, that's a good question, Ms. Johnson. Let me ask, let me ask the DA-
Wow. Thank you.
Let me ask the DA about that. Do you have an opinion on that? Whether we could approve the recommendation at $450,000 today and amend the contract at some point in the future to add an additional supplement, once it's finalized and formalized as to what is actually needed.
Well, you can amend any contract if all the parties agree to it. You know, your risk is that once you start demanding, someone's going to disagree. Now, if someone's getting more money, it's less likely it's going to be disagreement. It's just that it's coming back to you back, and you could potentially, June 5th, you'll just be mid-June if you want to defer the whole matter. I mean, you would potentially be amending the contract. I don't even know if you'd get that signed contract back from OSU. Sharon, thanks, you have a consummated agreement.
All right.
But I do agree that you do want to be assured that you can fully fund them, whatever matters are first.
That's my question.
That's the problem.
Are you talking about taking this out of the general fund reserve account?
Well, everything is going to come out of the general fund when we actually approve the final budget. Yes, sir.
Well, but I mean, okay, but in lieu of some other thing, are you, you're just talking about tackling the reserve, not-
That's where it was-
Moving the chess pieces on something else?
No, the general fund is the only source of revenue we have for next year's budget, and-
Well, obviously, but we've approved the budget, so I-
But it hasn't been approved.
Well, are you anticipating a change at the-
At the Budget Board meeting?
Were you talking about the Budget Board meeting or the Board of Excise?
That-
I thought we've approved the budget, at the Budget Board.
Well, can I raise one issue? I don't know, has this contract encumbered? Did anyone submit encumbering? Is it proposed agreement?
No.
That's what it-
Okay, well, you've kind of violated your own-
Yeah.
-rule without encumbering.
Right.
And saying you have the full amount ready to spend, so I would suggest that you not dispute it until you know you have enough. Otherwise, you get into that situation where you- Otherwise, you get into that situation where you potentially end yourself.
All right, well, we can work through that, I guess, a little further, but...
I was going to make the comment, but apparently since Gretchen said that, is if we could come to agreement for the $500,000, Dr. Kuhn, he's our Dean of Dowsner, is here today, and he's willing to sign the contract just to get this over and just to move on. But I'm not sure at this point, since she just made that comment, that that's doable or not.
And so we need to submit an encumbrance, I guess, for the...for...you could submit two of them, I suppose, one for $450,000 and one for $500,000.
Somebody else would have to do it.
Yeah, okay.
We had separated them out. OSU should not be on your financial system and encumbering the money any longer. You're not standing in the... So somebody else would need to submit that encumbrance. I don't know who that would be, but...
All right, well, it sounds like we may benefit from taking a little more time on this issue. So, in that case... Yes, sure.
Commissioner, I believe you guys have an executive session. If you were to defer this, I do believe that we could get the encumbrance and have it ready within the time that you got back in order to have the $450,000 encumbered. It was my understanding that you could approve the contract pending an encumbrance of funds, but that can be...we can probably get that done pretty quick.
We've been doing that.
For $450,000, but not $500,000.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, the $500,000 or whatever number, that would take the Budget Board to...
Yeah.
So if that's the pleasure of the Board, I'll go make sure that happens right now.
Well, I mean, we've been proven things on the contingency of it being encumbered. Is it your opinion that's still a violation?
Well, I...to be honest with you, Commissioner, I don't plug in the numbers and encumber items. I just always look and hope that when a contract's being proposed, that those dollars are being encumbered, so the county doesn't incur a debt. I mean, two years ago, we had a horrific problem with that.
Sure.
This is a large amount of money. It's half a million dollars approximately. I'm hearing that it's a pretty safe agreement, because it's been budgeted, been only to the amount of $450,000.
Right.
So my caution is, is please don't contract for something that you don't have the funds for.
So when we passed contingent upon it being encumbered, it wasn't legitimate unless it was encumbered? It's my question.
Correct, but you get into that legal argument, whether or not it's valid contract. You've seen that before, and you don't want to do it again, I'm sure.
Okay.
Cody. I believe a couple of years ago, it may have been three now, we had this issue about encumbrances and that this board was going to have an encumbrance on every contract. Then we got to the beginning of the next fiscal year, and we got into that limbo of, okay, we've got contracts that this board needs to sign, but it's going to use fiscal year money from the next fiscal year to spend it. So this board had said, and I don't recall the exact language, but on those contracts that were going to be for next fiscal year dollars, that you're going to be signing contracts on, instead of the actual encumbrance, there was going to be language, the pending, you know, encumbrance of funds, and then once the money is loaded that next fiscal year, it would be encumbered immediately. That's my recollection. Because they're contracting right now for next fiscal year, and they're going to be using next fiscal year dollars. Well, next fiscal year dollars are not available to be encumbered until next fiscal year.
All right, fair enough, but the point of the matter still is, is that the budget was only for $450,000.
Certainly, certainly. I'm just saying that if it was the will of this board to approve the contract at the $450,000 level, I don't necessarily think, based upon this board's action in the past, that an encumbrance is necessary today.
Okay.
But it is required that that money would be available.
But we have merely a recommendation. And I'll go back to Gretchen, or if you want to opine on this as well, Cody. We have a recommendation for one of our committees, that this contract be funded at $450,000. That may or may not be the issue or the decision of this board. So if the board decides to change that number, the budget has not been finalized and can be finalized with a higher number, in my opinion, but I'm...
If this board wishes to change the dollar amount of the contract, would also mean comment on this board to ensure that it is appropriately budgeted for before entering into that agreement. So you need to find some more money.
Well, the preliminary budget that we did approve had a couple of million dollars of reserves, so I don't think that's going to be an issue to find $50,000. Are we in a chicken and the egg issue here?
Yeah.
I know this is really being drug out. It's my understanding that $450,000 is available. Okay, it has not been encumbered, but it's available. It's sitting in General Government for the use of OSU Extension Center.
Yes.
If it's the pleasure of the Board to fund them at $500,000, and that would take Budget Board approval to get the additional $50,000. So, you know, that's just the short and long of it. So it would be the Board's pleasure to, I guess, add anything they'd want to to this agenda item.
Right, so we have the rest of the month to seek that from the Budget Board, except we have a public hearing on our budget coming up in the middle of the month, at which time there may be further requests for amendments to the budget. There could be. So I don't see anything as fixed in stone at this point. I think that we need to decide how much we want to contract with OSU for, and if the budget that was approved by the Budget Board needs adjustment, then we've got time to do that and opportunities to do that. Am I out of line here, Gretchen, on anything?
Well, I think the most cautious would be to move forward with... If you really want to enter a contract today, to enter into that dollar amount that you know you have budgeted, and then if you can find additional money, then amend.
Okay, Commissioners, Kelly Thomas is in the process of encumbering the funds now for this contract. One thing that I would caution the Board on, you do not currently have a contract for this fiscal year, okay? You are operating under the old contract, which had language that said a temporary appropriation. I don't know that 12 months is a temporary appropriation, but I'm not a lawyer. However, in order to prevent that, should you or OSU or the Budget Board not be able to reach a consensus on the amount to be funded, as of July 1, you would have no contract. There would be no money available to Oklahoma State at all. As Gretchen pointed out, the most cautious, the way to ensure that OSU at least receives some funding, is to enter into the contract today. And again, the Policy and Governments Committee did not recommend the $450,000 in that that's the number we came up. That came up via the Budget Board's approval of the recommended budget. So that's not the Policy and Governments Committee.
Understand that.
Can I just say something here? Because it's...actually, the theme delivers from OSU here, and I think it's important that we say the things, that we are not picking on OSU.
Yeah, we are.
I am...I am trying to stay out of jail until the last day of 2018. And so I want to be as cautious as I possibly can that we are doing the right legal thing. I opened up this discussion with my question. Can we give them $450,000 today? And can they come back next week, perhaps, for the other $50,000? Meaning that I'm not opposed to the $500,000. It's just that I want the process to be right. And that's for those folks who are possibly going to sign the contract. I just want you to understand that. I've worked real hard to stay on this side of that kind of issue with everybody, so it's not OSU.
Well, I don't want to be your cellmate.
Well, you're not going to be my cellmate, because I ain't going there.
You two could finally talk.
I don't want to touch the rainbow.
Okay, so do you still have your motion on the floor? Or did it...
Yes.
I haven't...no, I haven't accepted that, because we had an amendment on the desk.
Okay.
My question at this point is whether to proceed or to defer. We've talked about doing both.
Oh, okay.
I would prefer to, I think, at this point, defer it and see if we can come up with a figure we can agree on in the process, if you consent. If not, then we'll move ahead.
I don't mind deferring this item. I want them to be successful in this agreement. But I want this agreement to be a legal agreement. We have denied funds for non-encumbered people, and we need to continue to do that, in my opinion.
Will you entertain a motion to defer this item till next Wednesday then?
It is now encumbered.
The $50,000? The $450,000? Oh, yeah. They can have $450,000 today, under my motion. But if, you know, if you want to change that...
I would...I'm not happy with the $450,000.
Well, do you want to defer it? I have no problem. But that means that they've got some work to do and throw the wig.
Sure, we've got the rest of the month.
I am amenable to that, but the work has to be done, in my opinion.
Say again, you guys? Thank you. We'll figure this out in a second. Anything?
I don't...I don't know why the amendment couldn't occur at a much later time, if necessary. I don't know that the contract has to be amended. If you enter into an existing contract today for $450,000, as Joe pointed out, that protects everyone. They'll get their funding, and they'll move into the new fiscal year. However, if, say, August, or when you redo your final budgeting, if that could occur in, what, September or October, I think you could potentially amend this by agreement of the parties if you wanted to add it. It's not time sensitive, but I'll let Joe weigh in on that. But I don't know that...I think it would behoove everyone to move the contract forward for some amount of money prior to the beginning of fiscal year. I said that I think that it protects OSU if they would move forward on this proposed contract for $450,000. If later on in your budget, when you do your...I forget what it's called, but in September, when you really tweak that budget, if you have additional funds and you could find the additional $50,000, you could potentially amend this contract at that point.
My personal opinion, as the person that wrote this language, is that given that we don't have a contract for the year that we're in currently, and it's been almost 10 months, I believe that moving forward on this document today with the $450,000 not only protects Oklahoma State and ensures that they have an appropriation for the coming year, July 1, it protects the Board.
Correct.
Furthermore, I just...to not have a contract in place, I think, is the riskiest for all parties. And...but again, it's the pleasure of the Board. My recommendation would be to move forward on the $450,000. It sounds like Commissioner Vaughn is willing to take that to the Budget Board and then offer an amendment to this contract should the funding become available. And then the Board...the pleasure of the Board. I haven't heard anything that indicates that the Board is opposed to it. I think the Board, what I've heard...
My question was, is did you...would you see any potential problem or hazard with the Board approving $450,000 today? And then, say, later in the fall, when those final tax numbers come in, potentially amending it to increase it?
Again, Gretchen, I think the safest for both parties is to approve this contract as it is today. The other thing I might just remind the Board is, as the proposal came from Oklahoma State, where it line itemed out that money, that would have locked Oklahoma State into spending the money into those categories and would have had to come back to you all to be amended should they want to change that. The Policy and Governments Committee recognized that, and via our action, afforded Oklahoma State more flexibility in the use of the amount of money that is in the contract.
The silence, yes.
Sorry it's going on a while, but I just wanted to kind of let you guys know kind of how OSU, how we operate within corporate extension. I am giving, you know, money that I have to ask for, and that's the reason I'm here today. And July the 1, of course, is our new budget year. So whatever money my contract is for, as of July the 1, I have to decide how I'm going to handle that money. So therefore, if I only have $450,000 as of July the 1, I've got to eliminate a position, because I'm going to be short. That's just how...we don't look at supplements down the road. We kind of have to...that's kind of our policy is to, you know, because we want to be able to live within our budget, so that's kind of my issue.
So you don't want the $450,000 today?
I would...I mean, I would probably defer it and see if there's any way that we could increase that and give you guys time to talk about it. And I do know it's very timely, and that's the reason we're here today. But I'm just...the $450,000, I appreciate that, but that's just not going to cut it with my current staff right now. So I'll have to make some sort of decision.
Well, at the risk of bringing this in for a landing, then I would say, if you're ready to make a motion to defer, I'm ready to second.
Okay. Let me ask you one more question. Do we have the ability to address this year's contract today, to get a signature on that?
Are you talking about 1617?
Yes.
Yes.
Why did it take them so long? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry.
I apologize. Of course, anything that comes forth to me, I have to take it back to Stillwater.
Sure.
And, you know, there's lawyers, and there's other...a lot of people involved, and many people busy, and I just kind of got, you know, put off, put off. And then, of course, I'm very thankful for Dr. Kuhn that stepped up and kind of met with some of you guys to kind of finalize this. But we are ready today. I know you guys will sign the contract if you want us to do that, so it'd save us some trouble.
Kind of separate and apart from this issue.
Right.
The question was asked, and I wanted to make sure we could address that if possible. All right, anything else before we entertain the motion?
Well, it's great Oklahoma State's willing to sign the contract for this current year today. One of the things that the Board needs to be aware of, again, is that that language that allows for a temporary appropriation would be in the fully executed document that you may receive today. And given the status of the negotiations, et cetera, the Board needs to probably be mindful of the time that it took Oklahoma State to sign this current agreement, and not get caught into that, drawn out, well, we have $450,000, and we're just going to operate month to month without an agreement.
Well, I'd say that's their risk, since they don't want it today. They said they'll defer it, and they risk that. That's their choice.
If you get the contract back today, or this current fiscal year, the language remains in the document that you'll receive today that would allow for that temporary appropriation. And then, at some point, I guess, you would have to decide what temporary means, if we can't come to a conclusion on a contract for next fiscal year.
I agree.
Well, I think we've got some time to do that. So I'll entertain the motion to defer. Ms. Johnson, you here to second?
No.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Two to one. Thank you. We'll defer it until next week. All right, item number 21 deals with amendment to our zoning district for planned unit development, the Mayflower Market. It's from CG Urban General Commercial and Office District on attractive land, which is out at MacArthur and Edmund Road. Tyler, come up and give us that.
Morning, Commissioners. This is a much simpler process here.
We'll see.
The property we're talking about is about 7.3 acres, and it is a part of a PUD, residential subdivision with a little commercial portion on it. Being a part of a PUD, the commercial portion has to have 50% open space. And that sort of put a tight squeeze on the developer in developing that... And that sort of, uh, put a tight squeeze on the developer in developing that little commercial area. They wanted to change it out of their PUD and have a separate zoning of CG so they can eliminate that 15% of open space requirement. And basically, that's all it is.
What is a C-E-G?
CG.
Uh-huh.
Commercial zoning, that's a designation CG.
Okay, I thought I heard that before.
It's a, it's a little strip shopping center type thing out on the corner of MacArthur and Edmund Road, which has commercial on the opposite side of the street, so it's not, not, uh...
This is a Mayflower subdivision, which is, has large acreage lots.
Right.
And, uh, the owner of that, uh, also has the commercial part, as a part of the PUD that was approved years ago. Uh, it's just, it gives them a little more flexibility.
Is there any opposition?
No.
And it was recommended for approval by the...
The Commissioner.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Just checking. Uh, all right, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Item 22, excuse me?
Oh, I just thanked him for his time.
Oh, you bet. Item 22 is, um, from the Sheriff's Office, uh, contract renewal, uh, with the, uh, State Department of Corrections and regarding boarding of, uh, boarding of prisoners in the Community Sentencing Act. Uh, John, you want to come up on that? I had a question on that one. So I just probably don't understand terminology on it.
Good morning.
Good morning. I know we've terminated our contract with, uh, the Department of Corrections to, uh, house any of their inmates. So is this just for the period of time from sentencing?
This is for, it's my understanding on, on this contract, this is for those that are sentenced under the Community Sentencing Act, uh, Spencer Community Service. If there is a violation of that agreement, then it's my understanding, they spend a small amount of time in the county jail. Um, to date, we've looked, we haven't had anyone fall into this classification.
Okay.
Under my records, it's not 192 inmates, it's not 250 inmates. And it's kind of on a has needed basis if they violate a part of their sentence.
All right.
It's my understanding.
And under the new Attorney General opinion, will they, they be paying the updated daily rate?
That is our hope.
Have you collected any at the new rate? Uh, let you know, I have to go back and look. Yeah, it's all right. I didn't, that's, that's off the cuff, so. All right, uh, I think I understand it better. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions on item 22?
Move to approve.
Check.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 23, is there claims?
Move the claims.
Check.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Blankets, no changes? Is there a motion?
Move it.
Check.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any citizen participation this morning? Anyone care to speak? Seeing none, any Commissioner comments, Ms. Johnson?
Um, yes, I wasn't going to talk today, but, um, you made me do it. Um...
Somebody, somebody had to.
I know. Uh, I just, you have no idea how I feel about that vote. Um, um... Just wait. Um, the President of, of OSU and I are very good friends. So I want these folks to know that and, and know that I am not picking on you. I just have to live and vote the way I feel about the issues that are presented to me. We've got three people here who have three different ideas sometimes about every issue, and that's why we have a vote. Some agree and some... But, uh, I don't want you to go away from here today. You said that Mr., uh, Hargis, uh, talked to us. I, I think we've had the conversation that we were going to talk, but we didn't get around to doing that. Uh, so I just, I just want the record to be clear about my feelings for Mr. Hargis and, uh, OSU. OSU educated my son, one of my husbands, and both of my sons and one of my husbands, so I appreciate you very much, uh, for that. But don't go away from here thinking that we'll have to get you. It ain't like that.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, well, on top of that, I just want to make sure that the, the, uh, process is one that addresses their needs.
Yes.
And I know that's what you want as well.
Absolutely.
Uh, I think because of the change in status, this year, we, we approached it a little differently than we have in the past and, and I think that's led to some, uh, confusion perhaps. And, uh, and perhaps the, the contract issue has probably led to some, uh, attitude that, you know, uh, maybe things went a little differently than they could have.
Well, sure, because the contract isn't signed yet.
Right, and I think, I think we're going to take care of that.
Okay.
Today, hopefully. Uh, so, uh, I, I hope that we can move forward on this as quickly as possible to make sure that their, their needs are met. They, they do a phenomenal...
Absolutely.
...work in this community. And, uh, I just, uh, I, I don't want to see them short, short, uh, changed, uh, on, to where they have to, to limit that. Uh, that's, that's all I'll add. And I appreciate, appreciate the discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman for the day.
Yeah, Chairman for the day, thank you.
Um, when you say you don't want to see them not get what they want, I don't either.
What they need.
Or what they need, I don't either. But our Budget Board works like dogs to make sure that people get as much as we can let them have. And 99.9 times out of 10, nobody gets what they need. They get what they can work with. And there is a difference. And 450,000 ain't no little piece of money, you know, so...
All right, cutting off comments at this point.
Stop.
Any, uh, new business to come from the meeting? We do have an executive session, so we'll entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Uh, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Ready?
Is there a motion to return into regular session in the county commissioner meeting?
So...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 29.
Mister Chairman, I would move, uh, with regard to item 29, that the, um, uh, as discussed in the executive session, that the, uh, tort claim that was discussed, uh, be pursued.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.